Ladies and gentlemen. So now it is six o'clock, so welcome everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you so much for being here. It's been a long time since we've seen this many people in this gallery. We should have swearing in more often. This is a good thing, a good problem to have. And not only are you here, but you're smiling. That's really good. So if you would please stand and join us in the invocation and the pledge.
Keep us, oh God, from pettiness. Let us be large in thought, in word, in deed. Let us be done with fault finding and leave off self-seeking. May we put away all pretense and meet each other face to face without self-pity and without prejudice. May we never be hasty in judgment and always generous. Let us take time for all things. Make us to grow calm, serene, gentle. Teach us to put into action our better impulses, straightforward and unafraid. Grant that we may realize that it is the little things that create differences, that in the big things of life, we are at one. And may we strive to touch and to know the great common human heart of us all. And, oh Lord God, let us forget not to be kind. Please join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just a couple of brief housekeeping items, so you know what we're going to do tonight and everybody's on the same page. There is a reception after the meeting in the council workroom, which is the room immediately behind us. All members of the public are welcome to stick around and join us for that. That's not some secret chamber. Everybody's welcome to join us. Council immediately following the meeting, and council member Fernandez, this is for you also, immediately following the meeting upon adjournment, please meet me here in the center of the dais for Lori to take a quick picture of, well, I guess you're not gonna be here, but for Lori to take a quick picture of us prior to going back and joining the festivities. One other item, I don't know if anybody is here for this, but if you are, item 8C, which concerns the sale of the city property located at 8447 North 56th Street, is gonna be pulled from tonight's agenda. I'll talk more about that when we get to that item, but if you are here for that item, I don't want you to have to sit through everything and then find out that we're not gonna talk about that tonight anyway. So I don't see anybody here for that, but if you are. And this other thing is, please remember to silence all your electronic devices, and that includes those of us up here, so we have a double check here. Okay, ready to go? Good. Our first item of business is bittersweet, and that is to say a few words to our outgoing council member Sherri Donahue. But before we get to that, Mr. Donahue has asked for the opportunity to say a few words, probably to you because you can't interrupt him because of parliamentary procedure, as I suspect. So Mike, the floor is yours.
I'm sorry I washed that wool sweater and put it in the dryer. I wanna congratulate Mr. Chambers and Mr. Schistler on being re-elected and Allison about being elected. And I wanna thank this council for the last two years, which have been great years for you. You've accomplished so much, and it's your fault, Mr. Mayor, because you've built the consensus, and you just, people don't realize what you've done, and council member Abel has added so much to it. So good luck to all of you. The future is very bright for Temple Terrace. Thank you for giving me just a minute here to tell you about Sherri, because after 52 years, I know her better than anyone. When our kids went to school, she did too. She became a PTA person, the president 14 times, and for over 14 years donated 1,000 hours here in Temple Terrace. And then she moved on up. She actually learned how to do financial aid forms, did it at King, helped the King Kids, Tampa Bay Tech, getting into college. And then she got into the Education Foundation, which also serves a lot of Temple Terrace kids. And when she started, she was in charge of the scholarships. And in the first year of the foundation, they did nine, every year, nine. When she left 10 years later, they did 900 every year. So she went from that, and then the chamber came open, and she said, "Well, should I try?" And I said, "Go ahead." And so she did. She was hired, the chamber had 325 members when she came in, 750 when she left. And then she retired, so she could do Habitat for Humanity, home building, Corpus Christi, you name it, off and on, Brew Fest, Art Festival, Art &amp; Blanc, it goes on and on, be the president of every club in Temple Terrace at least once. And now she's come to the end, and be on city council. I forgot about that. She is, she's as nice as she seems, if you've met her. She holds no grudges, and she takes care of everybody that she can. So we look forward now, her family and I back here, to seeing her keep doing the jobs, the three greatest jobs she has, which is being a wife, a mother, and a granny. So we love you. Thank you.
Thank you, sweetie.
Sherri, I wanna just say a few words real quick, and then we will turn the table over to you to let you speak, but not until we beat you down here pretty good. So it has certainly been an honor to serve with you. We have accomplished a tremendous amount of work since we've been on the councils together. And we are really sad to see you go, but we know that you're not going far. And so we look forward to working with you and your new role in the chamber, again, version two. And anything that we can do to help you or your family in the future, we're certainly happy to do that.
Thank you.
And so, others? Yes?
I just wanna say thank you for being such a great example, showing us the way for how to be involved in the community and really be an excellent leader. So thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure working with you.
Twenty-nine years ago, you and I were appointed to the School of Private Task Force. I think you remember. We worked well back then, and I think we've worked well in everything that we were involved with since then. I know when I retired, I had indicated that I was interested in running for council, and you met with me. And you said, "Just remember, it's not what, it's whether what you think it is when you get started." Those words rang true, but it's, I know you and I both feel it's one of the greatest jobs we've ever had. So I've enjoyed working with you these last four years and campaigning with you and against you and with, during all the permutations. Good luck, enjoy it. I'll always look forward to seeing you in town, whether at Carrabis or at Publics. And thank you for all that you've contributed to this city. That everybody, everybody knows who you are, and everybody knows the impact you've had on our town. And thank you very much.
You girls, my pleasure.
Okay, Sherri, you know, we've worked together a lot of years together, doing lots of different things. I've enjoyed all that. These last four years on council, you've been great. We've accomplished a lot, and we're gonna continue to work together in all of these things. Because she's still on the Arts Council with us, and with the chamber, we'll be working together.
Thank you.
So thank you for your service.
Obviously, my pleasure working with you.
So Sherri, we didn't know what to get for you, and we thought that the things that we've done in the past, a clock or a little plaque to hang, we just didn't feel that that really, I don't know, we know your house is small, and you probably have a clock. And so, so we did something a little different, and we hope that you like it, but we had a painting commissioned for you. And so this is from your colleagues on the council, the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city manager. So I'll let you open.
It's not barking. Well wrapped.
It's not a portrait of Mike either.
This is perfect, and I know the artist well. By Terry Claren. Is that why Mr. Claren is here tonight? Yes, somewhere in the audience, yes?
Yes, walking in the back. There they are.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Claren, thank you so much. This is perfect, absolutely perfect. You know, my kid that I'm gonna sprinkle my after is in that park, but don't tell anybody.
And the floor is yours.
Oh, the floor is mine. Okay, well, let's see here. Let me open my book here. Let's see, no. Mike and I moved here in 1976, and the minute we moved here, now, we grew up in Tampa, okay? I love Tampa. We lived in Seminole Heights, and he lived in Welleswood. But the minute I moved here, I knew that I had moved to something special. Now, we had two and a half kids at the time, and so when baby number three was born, we looked around to see if maybe we needed a bigger house. And then we would come home to our street and the canopy, like, no, we're not going anywhere. And so it became home, and I truly, truly loved this city. And it's obvious, I think, and I have two of the four kids have come back to live in Temple Terrace, so that's a real blessing to me. But when I decided to run for council, you know, you think, "Oh, I love the city, I wanna work for the city, you know, and I can do this." I will tell you that I truly enjoyed every single moment of sitting on this council. There were some moments that were not pleasant, but those moments made me realize how wonderful all the other moments were. So those don't register anywhere in my mind at this point. The big benefit of being a citizen who loves her city, running for a job where you see all the ghosts, all the goblins, and all the bones in the closets, is that you understand how much work it takes to make this city amazing. And it takes the relationship and friendship that I now have with so many employees, you know, from the administrative clerks to the sanitation workers. Everybody brings together their little piece. And then you get to know citizens, they always know who you are. Have you noticed, you know, they know who you are because they see us, you know, so, and of course, you're supposed to know who they are, and as soon as they tell you they're a citizen, you do know who they are. And you see them, and they respect the work we do, which is so gratifying to know that what we do is respected. And so the accomplishments, those were all a team effort. Great accomplishment, sitting right here next to me. But the relationships and the friendships, those are priceless, and those are all mine to keep. Thank you so much for allowing me to serve.
James?
Yes, sir.
You're next. So I'm supposed to ask you to step down to the podium. I guess there's a brief moment in here where you're not a council member, I'm not sure.
Run.
So those of you, I think everybody in this room knows James Chambers, council member Chambers, and as you of course know, if you are here, council member Chambers was recently elected to his second term. We are very, very fortunate as a council that that occurred, but we're also, you are very, very fortunate that that occurred also as a citizen. And so I'm very excited to continue to work with Mr. Chambers, and let's say we swear him in for a second term. I believe Kathy Tack is here. Now Cheryl, help us through this. Is there a particular?
She has it.
You have it all under control? You guys have, okay. Let Lori?
Yes, Lori, she'll direct it.
Yep, Lori will help.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
James Chambers.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being employed by.
And being employed by.
Or an officer of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida.
Or an officer of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida.
And recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
As such employee or officer.
As such employee or officer.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear and affirm.
That I will, in all respects.
And I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances.
Observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida.
Of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of city council.
Of the office of city council.
You're back. You're back. And the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. I am greatly honored and humbled that I've been given the opportunity to serve the city four more years. First four were great, and we're in a super place, and I wanna continue that, and I am, with the work of our current council. And I wanna congratulate Vice Mayor Schistler on reelection, council member-elect, soon-to-be council member Fernandez, thank you. I wanna congratulate Bob Freeman for running and Brandon Smith for running. It takes a lot to run for any position, but certainly city council. You put yourself out there to the citizens, and it's a lot of hard work, so even though they weren't elected, I hope they stay involved with the city, so thank you. Council member Abel, look forward to serving with you again, city clerk, city manager, city attorney, great people sitting up here. And all you in the audience, thank you so very much. I'd like to introduce some special people to me, of course, my wife Beth, who stood up next to me, Kathy Tack, who swore me in. If you don't know Kathy, she worked for over 20 years as administrative assistant for two city managers, Tom Bonfield and Kim Leibach, so she was upstairs and was a good mentor to me in my career, so thank you Kathy very much. Next to Kathy is my brother-in-law Sam and my sister Mary Grace. They came for that. Mary hadn't been back in the city for a while, so thank you for coming in on that. But she did come walk neighborhoods and knock on doors for me, so thank you very much, both of them did. And then in the back, Bob Mori was my treasurer of my campaign. Thank you, Bob, and his wife Gwen, thank you for your support. It's been, it's been great. And I see sitting next to them Joe Affronte, former mayor and council member, thank you, Joe, for your support. So again, thank you all. I look forward to four more years serving with everybody up here, and anyway, thank you. That's it.
Council member-elect Fernandez, would you please approach the podium? So I don't think there's anybody in this room who doesn't know Allison Fernandez. This is familiar territory. Cheryl, you're eager. This is familiar territory for her. She has been here before and served on the council before. This is her second bout on the council, so congratulations. Okay, go get torn in.
Hi, Allison Fernandez.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen in the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being employed by.
And being employed by.
The city of Temple Terrace.
The city of Temple Terrace.
And a recipient of.
And a recipient of.
Public funds.
Public funds.
As such employee.
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Temple Terrace.
The city of Temple Terrace.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of city council.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Carlos, did we have a new name tag?
Temporary name plate. It's okay.
Allison, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you so much. I would like to say thank you to all of the members of the public in the residence of Temple Terrace for electing me to city council. I really appreciate the faith and confidence that you've expressed in me to represent you as a city council person, and I look forward to the next four years. I wanna say welcome to Joe Affronte, who was mayor when I served as city council member previously. And then I wanna introduce my family members that were able to attend tonight. My husband Jose is back there, and my youngest son, looking thrilled, Enrique, is back there. My mother, Marie, my father Ross, my brother Alec, and my little one niece Molly, and my oldest son Javier and his girlfriend Lily were able to attend tonight. And I, so I appreciate all the effort they went to. My husband had to cook dinner a lot more than anybody wanted him to, I think. And, you know, exactly what other members have expressed, it certainly is an effort to get out and do the campaigning, but it's a great opportunity to meet people, speak with people, and really connect with the citizens. And it's something that I hope you all will take to heart, that I do really love this community. We moved here in 1972. I didn't know at the time that I would be here at this age and raise my family here, and I didn't know that I would be sitting and running as a city council person. So you never know what you're gonna do. I encourage everybody to stay involved in your community in any capacity, and I certainly hope that some of the people that have run in the past for city council, even though they didn't prevail in this election, would run again. So again, thank you so much for the confidence and faith you've expressed in me, and I look forward to the next four years and look forward to serving with this council.
All right, Vice Mayor.
Abel's trying to raise her right hand and repeat after me. Mike Gill Schistler?
Aye, Gil Schistler.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
And being employed by or an officer of.
And being employed by or an officer of.
The city of Temple Terrace, Florida.
The city of Temple Terrace, Florida.
And a recipient of public funds.
And recipient of public funds.
As such employee or officer.
As such employee or officer.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear or affirm.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida.
Of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of city council.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor.
Sir.
And the floor is yours.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the council that I've worked with for the last four years and two years. Sherri, it's been, it's been great through the years, Mr. Chambers, look forward to working with you, Allison. We've worked together in other respects through the years. City manager, city clerk, city attorney, you're a great crew, and it's a pleasure to work with you. The election was, we all know what happened during the election. I was fortunate enough to be re-elected, and I just have some thank yous that I wanna give out and recognize some people that are here. First of all, thank you to the voters of Temple Terrace, who had the confidence in me to actually go look for my name on the ballot. It wasn't, it wasn't 1, 2, 3, I was number four, so I do appreciate the people that took the time to go looking for me. To the supporters that held signs or walked the streets or donated money or donated their time, thank you. And to Julia Almeida, who's the best graphics designer that lives in the city of Temple Terrace. To Annette, Jack, Frank, Danny, Jimmy, Joe, Joey, Jack, David, Eric, Ellen, and Bill, and Gina, and to my brother-in-law Joseph, who's, I don't think he got here yet, but to my brother-in-law Joe, who helped with the election. To my consigliere, Chris Barkwin. He was always a good sounding board when we would walk through the streets through our neighborhood, coming up with ideas and what needs to be done. To the Romeos, you guys know who you are, Doc, and Wayne, and Pete Ellis, thank you very much. You guys listen to me every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning, trying to figure out what's the next best thing we need to do, and that's retired old men who eat out. To my grandchildren, Alexander, Cameron, Kinsey Cobb, and Avery, thank you very much. You guys are the best supporters and the best campaigners that anybody could ever have. Thank you so very much, and I love you guys dearly. To my daughter Jennifer and her husband Adam, thank you for a great campaign. You were my treasurer, and you were always there whenever I had a question or didn't know what to do or how to think about, especially for how it impacts younger people. To my son Gibby and his daughter Kim, thank you for the same thing. You were always there, you listened to me, and you didn't, you corrected me when I was wrong, and you told me if my phone was on and so forth, so I thank you so very much. To my favorite mother-in-law, who passed this morning, you always supported me, so rest easy, we got this. And finally, to my wife Lisa, you're always being there for me, even on a night as hard as tonight must be. Thank you so very much, and I love you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, but those of you who know me know that even though we have a reception, we have work to do, right? And so we do have some agenda items. We'll try to pound through them as quickly as we can. But first item is approval of the December 6 city council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second. Are there corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No nays, the minutes are adopted. Next is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. I currently have no written requests to speak. There are forms in the back of the room. However, if there are people who wish to speak at this time to the council on items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, now would be the time to come up. We do have a three-minute time limit. I don't know if they're coming up or leaving. I think they're leaving. We do have a three-minute time limit imposed on all speakers and ask that you state your name, bless you, your name and city of residence first. Are there members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays, consent agenda is adopted. Next item is a resolution approving a subdivision plat application, SP 22-04, for the plat of 15.66 plus or minus acres at 13201 Telecom Drive and 6805 Woodstork Road to be known as Woodstork Park. And we have senior planner Gus Karpas here to explain.
Yes, good evening, and congratulations to the new council member and the returning council members. Yes, tonight before us, we have a PowerPoint. There we go. A resolution approving a subdivision plat application for the plat of 15.66 acres of real property, which are two folios to be known as Woodstork Park. Let's make sure this is on. So the 16... Or the 15.66 acre plat would follow a meets and bounds description that was accepted by Hillsborough County in March of 2022. The property lies east of Telecom Drive, south of Woodstork Road, and west of north Telecom Parkway. Currently, both properties do have an address. Lot 1, which is the western property, is addressed as 13201 Telecom Drive. Lot 2 is... The eastern lot is 6805 Woodstork Road. Just brief, Lot 1, again, is Telecom Drive address, would have 9.85 acres. It's currently owned by the USF Federal Credit Union. It's zoned professional research office facilities. It's vacant, and at this time, there is no pending application for its development. The west lot is the Woodstork Road address. It has 5.1... 5.81 acres. It's owned by WB Development Partners. It's zoned planned development, currently vacant, but at our last meeting, we did approve the rehabilitation hospital for the site. So here is the plat layout. It's difficult to see the center line, but you could see what the lot layouts were individually on the previous slides. So staff does recommend that the council adopt the resolution approving the subdivision plat application for the plat of 15.66 acres of the property lying south... Or I'm sorry, lying east of Telecom Drive, south of Woodstork Road, and west of north Telecom Parkway, and to the two developable lots to be known as Woodstork Park.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Karpas. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Senior and council members, any questions of staff? Very good. If acceptable, is there a motion approving a subdivision plat application 22-04?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No nays, resolution is adopted. Thank you, Gus. I think this...
Second one is...
Here's the way for the credit union project, is that correct?
Correct. Now, the... Yeah, the rehabilitation... Rehabilitation hospital can now go ahead. Now, the credit union parcel, there's nothing that has come in yet, so when something does, then they'll have to go through the site plan process.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next item is a second public hearing and second reading of ordinance 1540, adopting the 2022 capital improvement section schedule of projects update. I'll open the public hearing, and senior planner Gus Karpas is here to explain.
As you may recall, at the last meeting, the city council held the first public hearing and reading of ordinance 1540, adopting the 2022 capital improvement section schedule of project update. That's how it's listed in the comprehensive plan. At that meeting, Diego Guerrero with the Hillsborough County City-City Planning Commission provided the city council with the city's five-year capital improvement schedule and its 10-year long-term improvements for multimodal transportation district plan. He had indicated that the planning commission had found the plans to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and that they had recommended adoption. The council then voted unanimously to approve the first reading of ordinance and scheduled the second reading for tonight. Staff does recommend that the city council approve the second reading of the ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Gus. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Not council member questions? If not, I'll close the hearing and ask the clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the annual modification and update to the capital improvement section of the 2040 comprehensive plan for the city of Temple Terrace pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes by modifying and updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of projects for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 through fiscal year 2023 through 2027, and incorporating the 10-year long-term improvements for the multimodal transportation district for the 2023 through 2032 into the schedule of projects which incorporates by reference per the comprehensive cap... Plan cap policy 1.5.13 Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organizations Transportation Improvement Program, Hillsborough Area Regional Transit... Hartz Transit Development Plan, and the Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, providing severability and effective date in repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Be appropriate now to entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance... Adopt... Excuse me. Move to approve ordinance 1540 on second reading, adopting the 2022 capital improvement section CIS schedule of projects.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No nays, ordinance is adopted on second reading. Thank you, Gus. Next item is a resolution approving... Oh, next item is the one we're pulling, see? I tricked you. Item 8C is a resolution approving an agreement for sale and purchase of property located at 8447 North 56th Street. We are going to pull that item from tonight's agenda and hopefully put it on the agenda for January 3rd, although that's not a date certain. That's what we're anticipating. I don't want anybody to... This is concerning the sale of city-owned property at that location on 56th Street within the CRA. There's no problems. There were some last-minute discussions between the purchaser and the city today, and everybody was kind of hustling around trying to nail it down until finally, we just said, you know what? Let's just give this some time so we're not rushing through this. So this is just to give staff and the purchaser, the proposed purchaser, additional time to make sure everybody's on the same sheet of music. So the sale is still proposed. It's just that this is to give everybody time to settle down. So that item would be pulled. Next is carryover council business. Any carryover council business from previous, okay? New business and board reports. New business or board reports. Yes, Councilmember Fernandez. It's gonna take me a little while to get used to saying that.
I would like to propose, as we are coming into the 100th anniversary for the city, that we incorporate some Temple Terrace history in our meetings and throughout the city. And I don't necessarily mean that we have to be big history projects, but just maybe read a fact about Temple Terrace at the... At city council meetings and maybe put some information on display at the rec center and at the library and different places throughout the city where we can make people more aware. I know we have some things here at city hall and at the city council chambers, but not a lot of people come here every day, so it would be nice to try to just bring some fun facts in, and we can actually expand that and go into the schools and maybe read our fun fact on the morning shows that they have and just get some information out there.
So like at the beginning of the meeting, is what you mean?
Yeah.
Any objection to doing that, council? Staff, any particular reason we couldn't do that? We could do that, sure. You guys will have to help feed me fun facts.
I would put this out there to the public, those of you who know some fun facts and would like to share them. It would be awesome if you can communicate that.
Mr. Ritter has a small list. That's a good idea. Unless there's any objections, I don't mind doing that. We'll do it up front with the invocation before we get started with business. Sure. What do you think? Good? Tom, are you good with that? All right. Tom's good with this. Any other... Where are we at? New business and board reports. Anything else? I do have one thing. I would like to ask the council to consider scheduling a... And this is serious, so everybody... I know we're here to celebrate, but this is something that's a serious note tonight. I'd like the council to consider holding a special meeting on December the 27th. I know that that's right after Christmas, and we're all like to be in rest mode between Christmas and New Year's, I understand, but I really think that this group, as a council, we need to get together and discuss our response and our approach to the school district's current study to study redistricting and/or repurposing of certain designated schools within the county, and one of the schools on that list is Greco Middle School. This is not a time to panic because we don't know what the results of this study will be, but it is a time to plan because we don't know what the results of that study might be. And so the timing, although it's short notice, we really need to do this that... As early as possible because that gives us time to formulate whatever this council as a body decides our strategy should be. It gives staff and I time to formulate that into a resolution to bring back before the council on January... Is it 2nd? What's it? Whatever the first...
January 3rd.
First meeting, yeah, January 3rd, the first meeting in January, so that we can pass that because then we will be armed with... Not armed with it, but we'll have that in our pocket during the district's listening meetings that are occurring around the county. And this will also afford our members of our school support committee to have this resolution also, and all of us, so that hopefully, at least within primarily, we're all have the same talking points and we all have the same approach to this as opposed to each... Everybody's kind of going off on their own. And so at the 27th, if the council approves this request or thinks this is a prudent way to go, I would then also extend an invitation to the school support committee members to attend this meeting and be heard, and it'll be a council meeting, and it's not like a workshop, but we would invite them to give us their views on this as well, so.
6 o'clock.
What's that?
6 o'clock.
That would be my request for the council to consider. Regular time, regular place, just December...
They don't need a motion for it, do they?
Yes, we do. It's a special meeting, so.
Move to call for a special council meeting on the 27th at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the Greco situation, Greco Junior Middle School situation.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion.
Is there a way to do this from a remote location as I already have a scheduled trip?
Well, we have done that, yes. The vice mayor participated in meetings remotely, so yes. As long as the council approves that, we've done... Our rules allow for that, and so, yes.
Then if that's possible, I'm fine with it. I just won't be physically here.
Understood. Well, it's short notice, and I know that's a bad week for the holidays and stuff, so yes, the answer would be as long as the council. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, city manager, attorney, every clerk that works for staff? Okay.
So a couple other questions about this. At this meeting, will we be actually going through and looking at... I think there's three different options that the school district is examining, and so we're going to do our own analysis of those options and... Or... And then come up with a suggestion or a response?
Yes. Well, we will do whatever this council decides to do. That's not up to me, so whatever council members...
I'm just trying to figure out like what the...
Well, what I... And thank you. What I hope to accomplish by this meeting is I would like the city to adopt a unified proposal to give to the district. As you know, I'm meeting with Superintendent Davis on the 11th, and I'd like to have this in my hand to say, this is what we would like to propose. And the way I see this is just objecting is not going to get us anywhere. The community around every one of these schools is going to object. They're all going to stand up and jump up and down. They're going to hear the same things. It's going to destroy the fabric of the community. It's where our kid's going to go. It's going to... You name it. It's going to... But they're all going to do that, and I think we need to set ourselves apart and have a little bit of an advantage by not only do we not want them to change the structure or close Greco or move it or anything, but we also have a plan. So... And I think that will be different than what a lot of communities will do. I think they'll object and complain, but they won't come with a viable plan, and that's what I hope that we can do is to say, look... And I... I mean, I have my own thoughts already about what I think that should be, but I don't know what... If they jive with what you think. I mean, I think they're already on the road to becoming an IB middle school. I think they should continue... But, you know, that's for discussion if... At the meeting. So, yes, that's what the expected outcome would be, but we have a lot of smart people here, and the school support committee has a lot of passion and experience with this too, so I think we can have a productive... I think if we don't come up with something and we just object...
No, I agree.
We're going to get lost in the background noise. So we have a motion is second. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, any opposed? No nays? Just for clarification, council, I assumed that motion was made and approved with the understanding that Councilmember Fernandez would be remote.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, city manager. Oh, anything else? I'm sorry. Any other new business or board reports, I think? Okay, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just wanted to publicly thank former council member Donahue. She was one of the great welcoming smiles that I remember from the interview process and has been very just great to work with in the short time that I've been here, so thank you and all the best in the future. Wanted to welcome Councilmember Fernandez, welcome back to the days, and welcome the returning Councilmember Chambers and Vice Mayor Schisler as well. Congratulations. Wanted to just update the community and the council. We talked about strengthening our relationships with USF, and I was fortunate to have a great meeting with the USF President Rhea Law and the senior vice president for USF Community Relations, Eric Eisenberg, Friday afternoon. I found him to be extremely engaged and wanting to strengthen those relationships with this community. They actually offered to work on two or three areas that we identify and kind of work on strategic thinking for those concerns, and they also would like at some point to make a presentation to the city council here in chambers. So I think these are all positives that we're going to continue to cultivate, and if any member of the council has any questions or observations, please just direct them to me. Also wanted to share, real quick, since we are getting to the holidays, we received a very nice plaque, a thank you from Habitat for Humanity. This council has been very integral in allowing for developments in this community for Habitat, so a lot of folks have homes because of what this community has done. So they shared this little plaque that was hand-designed by one of the families, so I passed that out to you. And going along the spirit of gratitude and the holidays, we have a short 30-second video, and if Brian can cue that up, so we get everybody in the spirit of the holidays. We wanted to wish everybody a great holidays. Happy holidays to everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, and from our staff, and also note of gratitude to the great staff that we do have here for the wonderful year that they've put together for 2022. And then finally, a note from the police chief. As a matter of logistics for the folks staying for the reception, we would ask you, when you do exit, to go through the door marked "Fire Exit." That'll take you to the hallway to the parking lot. That's the most convenient access, and also you have... And also you have, you'll be able to use the restroom right through the hallway there. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bier. Any questions for Mr. Bier? City Attorney?
I have nothing particular to report. I just want to say that I look forward to working with the new city council and state how much I enjoyed working with the old city council. Some of you are the same, some of you are, I'm gonna say newer.